I don't have that empty one you gave us last year, so.
Call to order the regular common council meeting Monday, January 19th, 2015 at 7:03 PM. Roll call.
Maves?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Mark Wellnitz?
Yes.
Pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, January 16th. Agenda is posted at BMO Harris Bank Post Office Library in City Hall.
Council acceptance of the agenda.
Motion to accept.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Personal appearances for non-agenda items. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Yes.
My name's Darren Springsteen from the Seventeen Board Street. I'm here because you may have seen or come across your computer in the last 24, 48 hours, a preliminary proposal that we together to build multiple structure on 16 Albion Street House.
That's on the agenda.
And this is an existing property.
That is on the agenda, so we'll allow you to speak when we get down to that item.
Okay.
Thank you. And you're here for the same piece of property. And it doesn't look like anybody else wants to say anything else, so move on to the minutes from January 5th.
I make a motion to approve the January 5th, 2015 council meetings.
I'll second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Committee reports. Finance.
Motion to approve the bills on payroll list in the amount of $2,640,571.73.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mark Wellnitz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chris Wellnitz?
Yes.
Maves?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
That passes.
Motion to approve a temporary Class B license to Edgerton Area Chamber of Commerce on January 24th.
Second. Any discussion? It's not a trivia question, that's just a question. Be there. Hearing none. Roll call.
Mark Wellnitz?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Chris Wellnitz?
Yes.
Maves?
Yes.
And that passes.
Motion to approve the agreement with the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation for $489,000 grant award for the renovations of 203 South Main Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mark Wellnitz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chris Wellnitz?
Yes.
Maves?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
And that passes.
And four come up with finance, and I requested that we just discuss it here at the council. And then just consider request to donate property at 16 Albion Street to Habitat for Humanity.
Okay, and we have a couple people here that are interested in considering that property, so do you want to take a little background on it first?
Certainly. Page three of your packet, there's a staff report entitled 16 Albion Street. The staff report begins with a required Habitat for Humanity for the city to donate a lot, 16 Albion Street, that the city owns to their organization, so that a home can be constructed on the lot. It is a normal course for Habitat to seek lots, donated lots, in order to make houses more affordable for the people who will occupy them. In that same paragraph, there's a discussion about a builder who's expressed some interest in a lot, this lot, to construct a duplex also. So that's the extra page that you have in front of you. So this developer or builder is in the audience this evening. The information that's been provided here is, I would describe it as good background information. At this point, this person couldn't make a commitment for another six weeks because there's additional analysis needed to determine if this would be a good investment. So there is no commitment, there's no offer to purchase from this builder at this time, but there has obviously spent some time spent to express interest to you in that as a potential development. So that being said, when Habitat, when considering the Habitat request, there are several things that you can keep in mind or to evaluate. The four things listed here are lot sale price, what you might be able to get for the lot if it were to sell on the market, or obviously Habitat is seeking donation. Characteristics of the proposed structure, that was an issue that was of significant importance to the committee that you appointed, that when they sought developers to redevelop the site, they gave a list of some characteristics that the house really needed to have in order to fit in with the neighborhood. The community value of a Habitat project, that is very much a personal idea or personal preference as to how, what the Habitat program is about, and certainly the director of Habitat can describe for you what that program is and how it works if you need more background on what a Habitat project is. And the last factor that's at least on this list is the value of newly constructed structure. So sale price, we've had the lot listed for $20,000 for some time and have had no takers at this point. Obviously, we can't predict what it will sell for. If you were to continue to have it on the market, it would probably garner something, but I don't know what that number is, because until you get an offer, you don't know. It hasn't sold for 20,000, as I'd mentioned. Habitat has requested the lot be donated, again, to keep the cost down for the final project. And there's one connection with, if the timing works out, you may recall, we had a deduct on our demolition contract, that if someone were in line to purchase the lot immediately after the demolition, there was a savings to the city. Habitat says they can comply with that. I haven't asked the other developer. Six weeks, it's a possibility. We have till the end of March with our contractor to take down the building. They'll hold their price till then. So the characteristics that we are seeking are listed there in the bottom of the staff report. Habitat has indicated that they would be able to comply with those conditions. The community value of a Habitat project, again, it's a personal philosophy as to whether, what you think about a Habitat project. The last Habitat project was built in Edgerton on a lot the city owned, and in that case, the city donated the lot, and that house has been there, and the owner's been paying taxes since it was built. And the Habitat did note that they expect that the owner of this house would be someone selected from the Edgerton area. Property value, a little hard to predict until we have plans and we can actually have those looked at by our assessor. The existing Habitat house currently has a value of $122,000. The director has indicated that he thought this house would have a greater value, so that puts it somewhere in a range, again, an estimated range of 125,000 to 150,000, and that would be for a single-family home. The only other piece of information that I have that isn't in the additional information sitting in front of you is that the developer has estimated that the duplex would have a value between 200 and $227,000. So I guess the only other thing I would ask is if I've missed anything or misrepresented anything in my interpretation of the conversations, I certainly would make sure that you can correct or add. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Other than the March timeline with removal of the building, we've got a little time to work with this.
We do. And I could ask the contractor if that becomes an issue, if they would extend it further. I have not asked that question, but we did get it extended to the end of March.
Nice to do while it's frozen for them, I would think, to keep from tearing up the yard anyhow.
I don't know.
But it's going to get tore up sometime in the future anyhow. It'll be easier moving with it, not being, moving underneath them.
Actually, I'll note one other caveat in the proposal and the plans that are in front of you, at least the current proposal, which of course hasn't been reviewed or approved by anyone, you'll note that the access to the garage, which are in the rear, which is part of the design criteria, is intended to be across city property through the city parking lot. So the implication of that is that there would have to be an easement granted across our property to allow that to happen. So that has, you know, whether we already have access for one property owner across our property, it's, you know, an encumbrance that certainly you should not discount in your evaluation of any of the proposals.
I have a question. I just read somewhere that the developer doesn't know what the actual offer would be made on it is, but here I read somewhere that they're, someone's offering 5,000. I'm a little confused on that.
Oh, that was my initial thought looking at the project, because my, I came from financial miles from my previous request to, um, building in the Denny's investment properties, there is, there was one, um, that you have to make the product sustainable, so we work on the market, they rent and find out what we can get on a certain property, and work our way back to what, enough money there might be left to invest in the project, and still make the project sustainable. And so using numbers that I had from a previous project, I would feel comfortable, you know, at this moment, you know, making an offer of 5,000 dollars, but that's to be determined. I need to get some more current pricing, and finalize the plan, do some more elevations and circulate for beds, so that the pricing that I have from as well as the most of those still current, what the market has right now. That's right. So I'm not asking for the lot free, donate for, need to develop, but there is some value in it for me.
All right. Is there, do we have to decide tonight, or could we give a lot more time for him to get more information?
I'm not aware of, I don't know if Habitat has any deadlines, but I'm not aware of, other than our contract for demolition, there is no timeline that we're on where, so you have some time to contemplate if you wish.
So how long do you say you would need to get more information? So you...
You know, if I had it through the end of February, I would feel very comfortable with where my numbers were at, because what will probably happen is finish drawing this, designing it, tweaking it, and circulating for beds, the beds will come back, and that will dictate that I need to revise the design, or get into all the window that we need to have for it to be sustainable. And then I have to be circulating for beds a second time to fine tune it. Now, each time that takes, you know, a couple weeks to do that, so by the end of February, I would be able to have, I'd be very comfortable with a solid number when we go on to make a proposal in February. Maybe sooner, depending on how quickly my subs can figure out some beds.
Our second council meeting for February would be the 16th. Is anyone from Habitat here? Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Programmer for everybody, has an understanding of what the program is.
Does everybody know what Habitat does?
Yeah.
Would like to give a presentation, a short presentation of Habitat services?
Habitat for Humanity, Rock and Jefferson Counties has been around since 1990. We've built homes across both Rock and Jefferson Counties. We've built 59 homes in that community. The majority of the homes we've built are in Gainesville, followed by Lobe. We've built homes in Edgerton, Fort Atkinson, Jefferson, and Watertown. We've built houses, we have an architect who designs them. He actually comes out to the site, looks at the site, and designs a house that will fit into the neighborhood as well as the criteria established by Habitat for Humanity. We've certainly done having a problem with the criteria that is spread out for this particular project. All of our homes are single-family, all occupied, and in the case of Edgerton, people are simply not going to apply to the C of the word or something, and come up here and face the travel cost back and forth. So we're very confident that the tenants, like we would be either somebody that currently lives in Edgerton or currently works in Edgerton, must get closer to the job. We build homes that are affordable. They're all in the 1100, 1200 square foot range, and they're all three bedrooms. We put garage on the lot if a lot is suitable for that, this one clearly is. So that's pretty much what we do very much now. We work with basically middle, low middle income families who are working class families, they almost have a job, in order to pay and mortgage it in. Really what makes it affordable for them is the fact that we have the mortgage, and it's a zero interest mortgage. And so there's no interest, there's no profit charge on it. So it just makes it easier for someone who lives in the community to pick hand up.
I have a couple questions. Were you involved, the one back in 99, up on Winston though, or someone from your organization that was?
Winston?
On Winston Drive?
Yes.
Sorry.
Question?
Yeah, Habitat, that was Habitat, yeah, I remember the Habitat one.
No, I was not here. I'm only been involved with Habitat for 10 years.
Sure was, it's a long time.
I'm at least getting one up prior to that.
Oh, the other one has a proposal, now you checked the lot out, it's a pretty narrow lot, I guess, whatever, but they propose to use the city driveway parking lot for, to get to the garage. Have you, have you have any ideas yet, preliminary ideas, how you, where the garage would be, or how you would get to it when you do build a garage?
For Habitat?
Yeah, your house.
We have assumed that we would use the existing driveway.
Oh.
The lot is 50 foot wide.
Yeah.
The house, we've not done any actual measurements on that, we've set backs out. It appears that the house is sitting pretty close to the actual property line on the right-hand side of that house.
Down the north.
It appears that there's about a 10-foot driveway, existing driveway on that house.
Okay.
We assume the house is sort of narrow, long, and have a, probably a two-car garage attached to the backside of the house.
Okay. Would it be a two-story, a story and a half, like Cape Cod type?
It would be whatever the city designs. We've built stories and halves when we built two stories. We've not been in the house, of course, and so we don't know what the current depth of the basement is. So if it's a full-size basement, we would go with a two-story.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because that's whatever characteristics, you know, something that fits up, something of the character of the neighborhood.
The criteria that I saw said that you wanted a house where the tables face the street.
Yeah. Something like that, right?
Those are all things that we've done.
Sure. So...
Your name Dave Thomas?
Yes, sir, he actually is.
You're the one that got me into all kinds of trouble here about three or four years ago.
Ooh! This probably is what I've got to talk about now.
Uh-oh, better be careful.
You were intending to build a house up near the school on Ridge Street, I believe?
Crescent.
Crescent, okay. And this lady called me and says, "What do you think you're doing, trying to build a small house amongst these monster homes around here?" What are you talking about? Different Dave Thomas.
Dave Thomas, we're not related. I didn't even know your name, and it was Dave Thomas, I didn't even... A lot of people have a misunderstanding about the houses that we do. And fairness, I'd say that 20 years ago, the Habitat model was shotgun wrenches, and we put them up everywhere. We realized long ago that that simply didn't work out particularly in small communities. And as I said, we have an architect who goes out, actually sits on the site, he designs a house that fits into the neighborhood. Five of the last seven houses we've built have been two-stores. Four of the last seven houses have had a two-car garage. Yes, ma'am?
Go ahead, I've got a head, a couple more. How was that zone in that area? Is it R2 up there, R1?
R3.
It's R3, okay. Because, yeah, that was a three-unit at one time. Right, okay. But the tradition, that's been in like a single-family street there generally, not 100 percent, there's a couple here and there, but years ago, we tried to rezone the city to get them old, old single-family units back. They're turned into two units back in the 40s, 50s, 60s, or 70s, you know, and we worked back in the 90s, early 2000s to try to rezone or recode, rezone some of these properties in certain neck of the woods around here. And that, a two-story would at least fall into that category as a single-family, just generally speaking. Go ahead.
So my question has to do with the family, the choosing of the family or the people that would live in the house. So is that done after the house is built, or do you do that beforehand, or how does that process work?
Typically, and this would not be a typical situation, because typically we start our family selection process in September, and we start building in May, and so we have that timeframe in which to do the selection of a family. If we were to acquire the lot, we would have to start the family selection process immediately. We would still meet the timelines, because it actually saves us money. If we can get in there and start the construction and foundation as soon as the house is demolished, because if you backfill that lot as you're required, then I have to, when we dig that back out to get down to the bottom, it's just an added expense on road service. So we may end up in a situation where we would actually start the construction prior to selecting a family.
Okay, so otherwise, you usually select the family first?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I actually worked on a Habitat house last year in Madison, as a team building event for work. And so I don't know if this, this works for all Habitat housings, or if this was something different, but the people that were going to be living in that house, they were required to put so much time into helping to build that house. Is that the case for every Habitat house?
Yes.
Okay, so that's why you select them beforehand?
Yes.
Okay.
In our case, that number can vary from affiliate to affiliate, depending on where you are in the state or country. We require 350 hours of sweat equity.
Okay.
Every adult over the age of 18. So if they're going to be a child who's 18 years of age at the time we start construction, they're required to put in 350 hours as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I know the one on Winston up there, they, I remember the, I was involved with that one back in 99, and they were all part of the sweat equity part of it.
Yeah.
It was kind of, kind of nice that they put their sweat in their...
It serves a lot of purposes. One, they have sweat equity to the house, they have volume to the house itself. And two, they understand how a house is built, and they know where the wire is, so then they start hanging pictures and that kind of thing. They don't start writing the whole host and do the stuff for you. And it gives the kids a lot of volume to the house, where they can paint on it. In all of our cases, it's the first time that they've ever owned a home. It's the first time for the majority of them where the kids have ever had a room of their own. It's the first time when they've been able to pick the colors and the room that they were living in. Because when you're in a rental situation, your house is white. And so we have all of those kind of things going for us. We do a mentoring program, the family has to be assigned a mentor who they think for, throughout the course of the build, not the remainder afterwards. Because things that are normal to you change in the first, both for the batteries in your smoke protector are foreign to them. When things go wrong, they call the maintenance man, and you have to continually remind them that they are the maintenance man. So those kind of things go on. So there's a, there's a series of training courses that they have to take, they have to take 12 hours of budgeting from us. They have to attend the county home, homeowner buyer course.
Again, when you, Chris? Again, when you looked at a lot, you can actually throw a driveway in there and hope to the back garages?
There's a house there now, and I had asked a question, did you want us to meet that footprint? And I was told yes.
Okay.
So it would seem to me that if you're a competent architect, building a single-family home, you could meet that, because there's a house sitting there now.
Yeah.
So it would be see the house, it would probably sit on the existing footprint, at least on the width line.
Right.
And I don't know how long the basement, a lot of the homes, the basement is not completely under a whole house. That appears to have several additions to it.
Oh, yeah. I remember back in the 70s and 80s, you know, we used to park our cars in the back garage back there and stuff, you know.
So it appears to us that the house is about 30 to 35 foot wide, just by, by looking at the picture. We think we can, you know, if we don't, we have a house in that one.
Just as an aside, the plans would be required to be submitted, and they'd have to comply with all the setbacks, so, you know, we don't know what all the setbacks are in the current building, but the new building would have to comply with the regulations.
Have you ever had any you've had to foreclose on?
Not kind of, no, we have never foreclosed on a home.
I just wondered what the process was if that happened, if you find somebody else to move into it.
The process is the same as for any other place that forecloses on a home. We build the home, we sell the home to a title company, to that individual. And we've been working, so Madison, it's just like so. The difference there is, is that we have the ability to work with our homeowners. When they get 90 days behind, we don't have to foreclose like that. And so we can work with our homeowners, we need the wire in there. We had a home in Gainesville shortly, and very shortly, six weeks after they moved in, I decided she would die, one of the guys, two kids. He came to us and he said, "I can't make payments and go back to college and get another job." We have the ability to say to him, "You know, we'll install your payments for three years while you're back to college. A, you have to get your transcripts, and B, you got to pass college." And so we did all of those things. And so we have the ability to do those kind of things. And we're willing to work with people and just buy anything. And along the shore that he graduated from college, got a much better job, and in the last five years, he's lived, he's paid his earnings, he's down current. We can do things that banks and bank institutions do. So, and just to, that's a little off the way you asked, but we never foreclosed on any, you've come forward.
Was that quite the program? Holy cow.
Very happy with the program, but it is very well worth it for us.
Have you been, have you been motioned on this yet?
No motion, no.
I think if there's another potential purchaser of the lot, maybe we should wait to make sure that we can find out what all numbers he can come up with. Because I know when we, personally, when I decided that we should purchase that lot, I based it on numbers of, you know, taxes over the years and possible, you know, purchase price on the lot from a developer or somebody. And so, I just think that, you know, we, I personally agreed to purchase the lot based on the fact that, you know, we're going to be getting tax revenue on it and make up that money. And so I think if there's a possibility of actually getting a house that's, you know, of a higher value on that lot, we should at least see what we can come up with and see what they have to offer. So I would personally like to table this till we get more information.
I agree with that.
Was that a motion to table?
Yes, I'm going to make a motion to table it.
I'll second it.
An emotion to table cannot be discussed?
Hang in there.
We should, it should have some timeframe on it?
How about that, till the 16th, February 16th?
That's our second meeting in February.
I'll do that. February 16th.
Motion to table the current discussion on the property at 16 Albion Street until February 16th. Roll call.
Mark Wellnitz?
Yes.
Chris Wellnitz?
Yes.
Maves?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes. Well, thank you. We'll, we'll have that back on the agenda then for the 16th, and hopefully we can get something settled down, so everything can fall into place for somebody.
Is there a way, is there a way we can get ahold of you? Your number? Is that on here?
What is it?
Telephone number, be able to dialogue with you?
We've got the contact.
Okay, thanks.
Well, thank you, and we will move on then, back to Mark with the rest of the committee report.
Motion to adopt City of Edgerton Resolution 03-15, authorizing a 2014 property tax equivalent charge to the water utility.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mark Wellnitz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chris Wellnitz?
Yes.
Maves?
Yes.
Mabes?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
And that passes.
Motion to approve a subordination on CDBG loan number five.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mark Wellnitz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chris Wellnitz?
Yes.
Mabes?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
And that passes.
All I have.
Thank you. Fire District, anything to bring forward?
We are working on coming up with a solution with the, what is that, we're going to call that now?
Service Ward Program.
Service Ward Program. We are working on that, and then our next step after that is working on the 2% money fiasco and getting that put to bed. So, we've got quite a few things going on. Is there a special meeting again coming up this month, Chris, to deal with that issue?
Service Ward Program?
Yeah.
We're not sure yet.
Okay, okay.
We're not 100% sure.
Okay, they mentioned it last meeting.
Yeah, I think there will be, right, once the committee gets through some of their discussion.
We're hoping.
There'll be a...
Notify for, for the...
It won't wait till the next district board meeting.
No, thanks, thanks.
Yes.
And that's actually all I have.
Okay.
You're going to speak with Evan about some of the issues we've talked about? I am going to do that, yes, absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Public safety.
Public safety, we met earlier today. We discussed the emergency response plan. Chief and, we're actually going to meet next Monday and get a little, get a little further into that discussion. And we also discussed the intern program. Tom, you want to give them a quick explanation of what that is?
We're going to have to organize Blackhawk Tech, utilize an internship program that's across the city, and it's covered on Blackhawk. It's a reposition, it's just a requirement that they need through the police academy, that the students need to graduate, it's just part of the program. It's going to just begin on the list, and they contact them, gives them experience and education.
Good idea. I wonder why we've never done that before, I guess we never thought of that.
How many interns are we talking about?
One of our plans for this year.
Good, good.
How many interns are we, one, two?
Nothing's lined up right now, but it probably is one at a time.
Okay.
We'll see what's out there if we need to, if we, if we're asked, we're trying to count the number one hand, too.
Okay, and we are going to meet next Monday at 6:00 to discuss the emergency response plan. That's all I have.
Utility.
Utility Committee met on Monday, the 12th of January, and we have nothing to report, or nothing to bring forward from that meeting.
All right, thank you. Personnel.
Personnel met this evening, and getting to item number two, Personnel Committee has approved the promotion of Teresa Wagi to a full-time Police Department Administrative Assistant.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Next item is consider Mayor's recommendation to appoint Jim Capellin as City Representative to the Edgerton Chamber of Commerce Board.
Make that a motion to recommend, or to appoint Jim Capellin as City Representative to Edgerton Chamber of Commerce Board.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
A good call.
I think he volunteered, didn't he?
Good for him and good for us.
Must be getting bored.
Yeah.
And you're doing your time.
Motion, I second, to approve Jim for the Commerce, Chamber of Commerce Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bo is carried. Mayor Alderson's staff reports, he approved a license for trivia on the 24th, that was what that license was, so there's trivia on the 24th, and it was a, it was a pleasure to accept the $489,000 grant from the state to get that last warehouse of Reinhardt's project on some strong financial footing, so that project will get, get moving along, and hopefully he can get his school and business, and his supply business set up, so he can produce a little more revenue streamed out in the western side of the city.
Yeah, it was a good event down there. It was really nice, Dan did one heck of a speech down there.
Anyone else?
Well, Chris held his own against the big shots from Madison.
What?
You held your own against the big shots of Madison. You did a good job.
I'm glad there wasn't any TV cameras there. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those...